Good evening. We did not, which is unusual, we did not have an executive session before this, so we are not coming out of executive session right now. We are simply calling this order the regular session of the school Medfield School Committee meeting. It is June 8th and I'm going to begin this with a roll call. Leah Brown.
Here.
Tim Knight.
Here.
Anna Mae O'Shea Brooke here. Michelle Kirby here. And Jessica Riley here. I want to let you know that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield YouTube channel, Medfield TV YouTube channel after the meeting. All right, so I do want to call for public input at this point. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business, not on this evening's agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting at which the item is presented. All comments will be taken in person and limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the public record. Do I have anybody who would like to do a public comment tonight? No? Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve and routine the executive session minutes for April 14th, 2022, May 2nd, 2022, and May 19th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tim Knight, so moved. Anyway, here's second. Second Anna Mae. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 19th, 2022?
So moved, Tim.
Tim, and second?
Anna Mae, second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes unanimously. All right, so now we're going to get to what we really want to get to tonight, which is the 2022 retiree recognition. Dr. Morrison, if you'd like to take the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is always kind of a bittersweet meeting. We have this because we really want to honor the folks that are retiring. And we're sad to see them go, but we're happy for their new life that they have in the retirement world. So I'm going to just each ask each one of them to come up. I'll say a few things about them and I'll read the plaque. And then they can certainly leave after their this part.
Or you can stay for one more glorious meeting.
So Luann Gault is the first teacher I'd like to recognize. Luann has had 23 years of service as a high school math teacher. In addition to being an outstanding teacher, I know that Luann has a strong reputation of making connections with kids, a strong connection with kids, and establishing a real safe environment for kids to do math. And I think that's a really important thing at that age. And I know that whenever I visited her classroom, kids were super engaged and always having a good time. And what do you call them?
Cheroebine.
Cheroebine, I knew it was something like that. So it's, I'm happy for you, Luann, but we're also sad to see you go. This says Retirement Award presented to Luann Gault for 23 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation, the Medfield School Committee, on June 2022. Congratulations. By the way, 204 years combined of our retirees' service to Medfield. Nancy Giomarco is our next. Nancy Giomarco has had 13 years of service as a special education team leader. Nancy has had the very difficult job of working in three elementary schools and making sure that all of our kids that need additional services get them. And she's worked with countless number of families and students. And it's really made a difference in a lot of kids' lives, I agree with that. So congratulations, Nancy. Nancy Giomarco, for 13 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation, the Medfield School Committee, June 2022. Congratulations. Seth Helustine is next. Seth is a 23-year veteran of the Medfield Public Schools as a middle school English teacher. He is known as an outstanding teacher in English, especially in writing, doing things like a lot of conferences and one-on-one work with kids. He also connects with kids outside the classroom as a coach. And even though he is a Lakers fan, we think that it's going to be a great retirement for him. So Seth, congratulations for 23 years. Oh, that's right, that's right, I forgot about that. For 23 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation, the Medfield School Committee, June 2022. Carol Upona Fisher. Carol is 20 years of service, Memorial School kindergarten teacher assistant. And I think whenever you see Carol in her element, she always has a smile on her face, and that element isn't a kindergarten classroom. She always does a great job with the kids. And recently, she's taken on a leadership role within the unit B. Has done a great job with that, so we spend a little bit more time together, don't we? Going through that, but I just want to wish her the best. She was working our kindergarten when we transitioned from just having a half-day program to a full-day program. So congratulations, Carol, on your retirement. 20 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation, the Medfield School Committee. Congratulations. Laura Singer is next. So when I think of Laura, I think of 32 years of service in the district as a reading specialist. And I think of how many kids that she's helped with a love of reading over those 32 years. Kids at Memorial School, and they're just learning to read, they're just emerging readers. And I know that Laura has helped so many of them. So, but 32 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield with deep appreciation, the Medfield School Committee. Congratulations. And last but not least, sporting his best Hawaiian gear tonight, Thomas Quayle. Tom. Tom has been in our district maintenance department for 24 years. I think of Tom a lot when it snows, because Tom is one of those guys that works all night and gets us into school on time. Whenever we're all sleeping and we're wondering if we're going to have school, Tom is the guy that's been following and doing all that work. He's had a lot of dedication, a lot of different opportunities to help out the district, and he is a well-deserved retirement. Congratulations. Three other folks that are retiring that did not, were not able to make it tonight. Maria Hasek, who was our athletic trainer for 15 years of service. Ross Irwin is a high school math teacher for 30 years of service. And Heidi Okel for 24 years of service as a memorial grade one teacher assistant. So congratulations to them as well, and wish them the best in their retirement.
Can we take a picture?
We do, we have to take a picture. Mike, do you want to take it?
Yeah.
All right, we take a picture.
Well, we're taking a picture. Yeah, we take pictures. This is what we do.
Oh, I thought it was just you guys.
Just the chair.
Oh, is it just me? I thought so. I wore my short shoes, like behind the.
Yay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Carol, how long were you with Gator?
Nine years.
Thank you. Gator with kindergarten. Yeah, you know, kindergarten, they have.
We were a bee.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Pretty much all of my children's teachers retired, and I'm trying not to take them personally.
It's when they retire right after.
It's right, yeah.
It's like spring falling.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is senior project from, report from Lisa and Dia, Louise Brooke and Dia Yada Fataya. However, we're going to have them come next week to that next meeting, so that we have time. I think they are off on their senior adventures this weekend. I do not blame them. So at this point, we do have end-of-year updates, but I have been informed that our PTO person may not be here for about another 20 minutes or so. Which means that, do I have the MCPE person? Yes, please come up. All right. So.
Busy parking lot.
It is. They were all coming to see you.
Hi, I was a little bit early.
They're coming to see the two Lizzas.
Dr. Morrison, would you like to introduce?
Sure, so our new co-presidents, MCPE, Liz Brothers and Liz Wicker. Congratulations, I think.
We've been there. It's good.
All right, shall we start? So, dear members of the school committee and members of the public, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We are Liz Brothers and Liz Wicker, and we'll be serving as co-presidents of the Medfield Coalition for Public Education for this upcoming year. Our all-volunteer board consists of individuals with a variety of interests, backgrounds, and skill sets. We raise money through a series of community-based events and activities, and then we give that money back to schools through grants requested by teachers, staff, and administrators. We have funded a wide range of future programs and initiatives, such as public speakers, curriculum tools, digital innovations, and facility enhancements, among others. We pay particular attention to academic needs that exceed the parameters of the school budget. We don't come up with the ideas that grant applicants do with the support of the school administrators. We just make those grants a reality so long as they meet our mission, which is essentially to support innovative programs and curriculum enrichment. So our goal this year was to try to return to normal programming to the extent that we could. So after a year of mostly holding virtual events, and for the most part, we were successful. But reflecting that, much like our schools and students, we really wanted to get ready to embrace that return to normal. We were very eager to support our schools and get back in. So we kicked off our year at Medfield Day with our MCPE booth. This year, Medfield Day was really a special experience, as it was one of the first celebrations that Medfield residents experienced after the social distancing for many months. Our first fundraiser this year was Fall Fest at the German-American Club in Walpole, which was very attended and actually sold out. At the beginning of December, we held a virtual wreath-making class in recognition that some members of our community might not be so ready to be back in large crowds. And in March, we held our 15th Annual Spelling Bee, which brought together 383 spellers from Teachville, Wheelock, and Dale. This was really an exciting event, because at this point, only the fifth graders had an opportunity to participate. This was brand-new to the younger kiddos. This event really could not have been successful without the help of so many teachers, administrators, and community members who volunteered their time. And finally, we closed out the year with our Blue Ribbon Campaign, which allowed families to recognize teachers, staff, and administrators who made a difference in their students' lives this year. Over 75 educators and staff were nominated and honored on social media and at MCPE's annual meeting. Awesome, so as we said, MCPE's purpose is to fundraise and fund grants that bring unique, innovative, and enriching ideas for our school. And this year, thanks to the efforts of our community, our corporate sponsors, our grant applicants, and most importantly, our educators, we raised over $60,000 and awarded over $40,000 in grants across our district. This year's grants enhance the education of students in pre-K through 12 classrooms. During this school year, the MCP board made the decision to include our pre-K classrooms as part of our grant funding. Many of our grants were built upon previous initiatives with the end goal of moving onward. We funded a science field trip to study local ecology for our male schoolers. A visiting science and engineering team taught our Dale Street students. Our teachers at Lake continued their math training. This professional training began a few years ago, and our teachers were ready to take on Phase Two of this learning in 2022. And the perennial third-grade day at Rocky Woods was where the new supplies so that our students can continue to celebrate their learning in this most memorable ways. So we also funded a few grants that helped our pandemic learners have an opportunity to get their wiggles out now that they're back in the building. Wheelock will have a sensory path in their hallways. We had an awesome hip-hop assembly at Dale that infused diversity in the arts. Every classroom at Wheelock next year will have sensory tools to promote regulation, improve focus, and increase participation. The bathrooms at Lake were updated with sanitary dispensers that promote positive body image and hygiene, as well as new water bottle dispensers. So we are excited, and we are looking forward to next year, when we will strive to continue to do what we do best, raise money and grant money in support of our schools. We're really excited for our events ahead of us. And in particular, we'd like to ask everyone who's wrote to stay the date for the Fall Ball on November 5th. So lastly, on behalf of the entire MCPE board, we want to thank, obviously, all of you, but also the teachers, administrators, staff, corporate sponsors, and this community for allowing us to continue our mission. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Say, so much of Medfield and kind of school culture runs around these events that you, that the MCP puts on. And to be able to see kids do the spelling bee this year, and, and, you know, Fall Fest, but also last year, when you were working so hard to keep your presence in the schools. I know, even in the best of times, and I know Anna Mae has been on the MCP as well. Even in the best of times, MCP is a tough job, and it feels like it's full-time. And the first year is really hard, and then it gets a little bit better after that, unless you're co-presidents, and then, God love you. But I do want to thank you so much, and I understand how much difference 18, was it 18 at this point? People truly make in the life of all of our schools and make us the people who do have these innovative programs that do allow us to be able to teach our kids in the way we want to. So thank you. I think I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so I know that Nicole is probably not going to be here until 7:30, so she, we can either advance for her, or we can, we can start with the hospital. What do you think? Should we move on to the hospital, or should we go through some of this kind of?
Excited about the hospitals.
Boring.
What do you think? I don't know.
She's not going to be here until 7:30, that's 10 minutes. I think we should go into, I think we should go into the hospital discussion, because obviously, it's enormously important. So with that, if I could have members of the State Hospital Redevelopment Committee, kind of a per se podium, or however you want to do this, and Dr. Morrison, if you would like to kind of introduce what's going on here. We asked the Hospital Redevelopment Committee to come in, and they also brought members of Trinity and support your consultants to, to kind of talk to us about what is happening with the State Hospital, what the proposal is that the town will be voting on on June 21st at a special town meeting, and generally, numbers and impact on the school, as well as numbers and impact on the town. So with that, shall I hand you the floor, or would you like to?
No, you said it.
I said it. All right.
So I can do the individual minutes.
Please, do you have a presentation slides or anything?
Trinity has a presentation. Are we able to get that?
Yeah, I'm just working on getting them uploaded here right now.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just going to spend a few minutes. How much time does this need to take? So, just want to first say thank you for including us on your agenda here tonight. I'm Todd Trey Baker, I'm chair of the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee, and I'm joined by one of my colleagues, Elizabeth, committee here tonight, Johnny Martinez. And we also have with us Jim Key, the founders of Trinity Financial, and Trinity Financial and the fiscal impact advisor, Dr. Jared. So, just probably to hit the high points, and then we can talk in as much detail as you would like. As a development committee, we've been working on the State Hospital redevelopment for about four years. Our committee was formed by the selectmen after the five years of master planning to go and see, and sort of realities of the real estate world of the town's master plan could be, if it was viable or not. So it's really been focused on implementation and potentially execution. And so, a key part of that was to issue a formal request for proposals that is required in the state's procedures whenever a town is disposing or selling a recent physical property.
Todd, can you tell us when that happened? The RFP, just so that people.
Was issued in April of 2021.
Okay.
So, you know, prior to that, we had done some outreach to developers, kind of not mining information gathering. One of the big takeaways from that was the then-current zoning of the hospital, which was business industrial, was a big wild card that the town was trying to pursue residential development to the extent that the zoning could be adjusted or changed in accordance with the master plan prior to formal proposals that would be beneficial. So in 2019, we, there's a special town meeting to vote on the zoning change, which passed by the requires from their margin. And that was really the event that then encouraged the selectmen to charge us for issuing a request for proposals.
And I just want to clarify that the master plan he's talking about is the State Hospital master plan, not the town-wide master plan that was taking place at approximately the same time. So, there's a lot of master plans, a lot of planning, working on action.
Right. And so we, you know, we did some, you know, some own technical studies of our own before we went to RFP. We discussed water capacity, things of that nature, looked at the environmental condition of buildings. And eventually, and we did bring out some technical assistance, the requirements of the state, legal assistance to issue our RFP that was in accordance with our requirements. So that was issued in April of 2021. It was amended a few times in response to questions and answers from developers. We had a site walk, you know, prior to the deadline, and we eventually established a deadline of August 2nd of 2021 to receive this. So, you know, I think, I do want to mention, you know, you never know what you're going to get, right? When you go through a process like this. So we had a formal marketing plan that, you know, went out to, just from the state's list that we worked on together, you know, 50, I don't know the exact number of them, but it was why they distributed. The town had gathered its own list over many, many years of people expressing interest in this property. So, the RFP was made available for that list. The opportunity was advertised in the Central Register and the Medfield Press. And we were getting lots of phone calls, and we were being contacted by lots of people, not just developers, but specialty law firms, architects, environmental firms saying, you know, we're really interested in this. They're seeking opportunities to, you know, let us know if there are developers contacting you that are looking for teething partners. So there was a, there was a great deal of interest, and when we did our site walk in May, we had 20-something people, you know, representatives of at least 10 development groups walking the site and gathering more information. We're not, just for logistical reasons, allowing access into the buildings. And really, on the same light of thinking, you know, as a development committee, we didn't think it was appropriate to allow developers and their consultants, et cetera, to be contacting police chief, fire chief, school committee, just in terms of respecting people's time. So, until we select somebody, we don't really want a lot of inquiry, you know, directly of, you know, town boards and committees, because, you know, until we selected somebody, we didn't select somebody. It really was kind of secondary, people are busy. So I know, you know, Mark in particular stood out for wanting to talk to everybody prior to the bid deadline, and we basically said, we're not, we're not okay with that. So despite the feeling like to you it's coming in kind of late, and that's, that was an executive decision by the development committee to not have you be inundated with requests and questions from groups who in the end, you know, maybe weren't going to even submit, but want to be selected for the opportunity. So. You know, we ended up receiving just two proposals, which surprised us. We were obviously hoping for more, one of those proposals had several different variations. Trinity's proposal was quite consistent with the town's master plan and site, historic preservation, open space, members of department units that was consistent with what the master plan committee had identified as desirable for the town. The other proposal that we received called for demolition, scraping the site, 600 to 700 apartments. And, you know, going through our formal rating process as a development committee, which also involved historical commission, CAM, because of their presence up there, you know, we chose not to pursue the proposal to focus on Trinity as being the most responsive proposal that we received. So we ultimately recommended that to the selectmen, and the selectmen in November, as they made a Trinity's proposal as the most advantageous. That then kicked off a period of negotiating a preliminary agreement, a formal legal agreement that would allow site access, access into all the buildings, to allow their team to gather more important information about the condition of the buildings, measurements of the buildings, and also to then finally say to Mark, it's okay for you to, you know, start, start talking to everybody in town. So, you know, it's been a very busy couple of months. Trinity has been sharing all of their reports with us, the commission, so our reports, peer review of their reports. We've had some conversations with Dr. Morrison and Chair O'Reilly about their work. And, you know, just today, actually posted our peer review study, which we haven't accepted as a development committee, but just in the interest of time, felt it was appropriate to share, let people review and comment. So I would just say, you know, from the development committee perspective, our goal here tonight is to make sure that, you know, hearing from the school committee, we've had some terrific early conversations with some members and the superintendent, but we want to make sure we're, you know, we're doing our best to understand your questions and comments about the proposal and getting you answers that you need, getting that to the special town meeting, which has been scheduled by the town now for Tuesday. So I think, you know, we have Mark and Trinity here this evening. It's probably best to have them take you through their analysis. Our peer review supported that analysis as reasonable. We don't have our peer reviewer here tonight, but we were happy to talk about their work, our peer review of that work, your comments, questions, et cetera, just to make sure that we understand any concerns or questions that you might have.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, before the next crew is up, first of all, thank you for serving on this committee. I know it's a lot, so thank you. Um, but why do you think you only got two proposals? If you had 20-odd people, or maybe 10 different developers walking the site, is they, did you reach out and say, why don't you put in the bid? Or was there some consensus of?
I wouldn't say there was necessarily consensus. I would say there was a range of different reasons. And, right, so I would, to some examples, I would say, you know, some developers looked at it and just ultimately decided, you know, their business is really geared towards the construction. And with the town, it specifically stated, it was a goal, in fact, the town's agreement with the state to buy the hospital in 2014 had a good big effort at historic preservation of the building. So there were some developers who were interested, but as they really got into our plan of the buildings, realized this is really a historic tax credit play. And even though they had done some historic renovation in the past, they're really more focused on new construction, new build with maybe, you know, outside of one developer, large developer, who've done other state hospitals say, you know, this is really seemed to be 75% historic, we have more. If it was the other way, if it was, you know, 75% new build, or 25%, you know, that would, you know, come in, and it's a great project, nothing but for that. We had others say, the town has bylaw for 25% affordable housing. If you were looking for 100% affordable housing, that would be a business plan, because there's other resources we could tap into. But you're really looking for a predominantly market-weight property, yet it's still affordable housing. So you're kind of a tweener, you know, you got 100% affordable, you got 100% market. You know, we could do it, do we think we'd be the most competitive? We want to spend our money, it's going to be, we decided to pass. We had others say, we're expecting a lot of competition. We're not sure we could win. I think it's early on, the Trinity's group know for historic preservation, was very interested in tracking the site from the time the town bought it or before. So I think they just decided in the end, you can't win, we don't want to spend the money, and the team, and the plans, and everything. To feel like we don't have a great chance. So, I would say those are some of the reasons.
Can you remind me, was in the original RFP, was CAM a part of that RFP in terms of looking at donations? Or funding for CAM?
No, we asked as a party, so we have a four main criteria for the RFP, and then some groups within that. And we did specifically ask, because the town had already entered into 99-year lease with CAM with the chapel building in the primary. We did specifically require developers to tell us how their project would interact with the CAM proposal and, you know, what their thoughts were about having a complementary housing project.
And was that considered a negative or a positive in general, when you spoke to other developers about having CAM there?
I, you know, I think it's. I, you know, I think it depends on the developers. I think, you know, most of them is very positive, because they're thinking, okay, this is, you know, this is a bit complicated project. If there's already a sense of place, if people are coming up here to, you know, go to concerts or see artwork, or there's some activity in the campus, that it helps draw people, makes it a more desirable place for people to live.
Were there any discussions around local agreements, anything around police, fire, infrastructure, or towns, schools, anything like that in any of the RFPs? Or is that something that's coming after, or within this discussion?
We asked for assessment of this whole thing.
Okay.
And the initial study that we received from Trinity, you know, I think you probably saw that it's been updated, but it was a bit of an additional proposal. The other proposal we received had some very, let's say, high level numbers, which were a little impossible for us.
I remember us communicating about that.
To evaluate.
Same thing with Trinity, it wasn't quite, yeah. So we've only just gotten the numbers and had a peer review within the last week. So I think you can understand that there's probably some level of concern here about what the impact of this project will be on schools, how long, how fast, and how much the town will have to be made aware of the impact of not only this project, but the other projects that are in the pipeline that could increase our student population by almost three times of what Trinity originally estimated. So I think as we're talking tonight, very important for Trinity and for the committee to kind of weigh in on how those kinds of impacts will be made to, to help our town, which is financially strapped, although it may not look like it. We play very, very close to the line because of our residential tax rates. And there's a lot of concern, I think, not only amongst the population, but certainly amongst the committee, that there is a greater net negative, and there could be a greater than a net positive in terms of schools. So it would be most helpful if, as you're going through your presentation, you really speak to us about how it is that we can mitigate those issues over time, and what kinds of proposals we can do that will make it possible for us to be able to continue to have a kind of school system that will drive people to your rental units and to your affordable housing, and how that will then help the tax base of the school. So I think that's very important to us to hear.
So we certainly acknowledge and agree with the importance of that issue, and being able to respond to questions about that, and establish.
But at this point, with any negotiations, there has not been a set dollar amount, aside from the money that's been given to CAM, which is now, what is it, the Bell Forge?
Yeah.
Organization. But at this point, within any of your negotiations or any agreements, there is no local, local agreement, that money or mitigation money.
Are you talking about the one million dollar donation?
Yes. Right. So that's to CAM, but that's not to mitigate anything.
But let me, let me address that. So that was not something the town negotiated, you know, on CAM's behalf. That was a decision made by Trinity to do that. So the town is not considering the donation to CAM, part of what the town is receiving for this project. So what the town is receiving is there's a two million dollar acquisition payment, there's a $525,000 of technical cost reimbursement to the town. So let's say the proposal passes that town meeting, it goes to permitting, and eventually goes to construction, might choose to hire a construction manager, other consultants to ensure.
And obviously taking on all the infrastructure that needs to go in to support.
Right.
So that's, there's, you know, some benefit there. But that does not necessarily help the schools with the benefit of increasing, as we've spoken about, the infrastructure that needs to happen in order to have us cover a much more significant route in terms of busing. The number of students who will come, particularly now that we know that many more of these units will be three bedroom than we were anticipating initially, and that there is a mitigation cost for this. And, you know, quite frankly, it is some of the most beautiful undeveloped land on the Charles River. And it's going to go for two million dollars, and a million dollar donation to a 501(c)(3), which is a beautiful thing. I'm not against it. I think it's a great thing. But where do the schools end up in that? So I think that that's kind of where we.
I know we're here to talk about that. I just do want to clarify a couple of points, and maybe I should start it by saying, I mean, the proposal is for the town to transfer about forty-five acres of, one hundred and twenty-seven acres of the town owns. And those forty-five acres, I would say, are characterized by the brick buildings.
Yeah.
So Trinity's proposal is to historically renovate all of those buildings.
I have to say, just to clarify, I love Trinity's proposal. I love what they're, you know, personally, I have looked at it, but this is, this is great. As much of the uniform plan that kind of master plan came up with, I think this is pretty close. But at the same time, we have to think about the practicalities of this as well.
For others, you may not be totally familiar with the proposal, the town is keeping all of the open space and green areas, as well as our arena area, which is characterized by the single family.
Yeah.
Home. So we would be voting to authorize the selectmen to sell about a third of what the town acquired. Trinity pays all the environmental remediation costs, which right now are, you know, the 2014 agreement with the state, we're on the, you know, we've got two bucks of liabilities. That's estimated, and I don't want to hold it, but it is not, but they're thinking twenty million dollars. All the infrastructure we pay for by the project, unless our plan predicted that, about twenty-six point seven million dollars. So, yes, it's a two million dollar purchase price, but this cost of the town, otherwise expect to occur, held the property would be borne by Trinity.
Although none of the infrastructure costs would be incurred by the town if we held the property in perpetuity. So it's kind of a wash on the twenty million dollars there, but, but it is.
You know, I think you're, you're going to own twenty million dollars of contaminated buildings. If you never go forward with the project, I agree, you want to occur the infrastructure, but the twenty million dollars is we already own.
Yeah.
So again, I don't want to take the focus off of the schools, which I know is what we're here to talk about tonight. But if, if, if behind the question is why only two million dollars, I think, you know, one of the.
I think behind the question is, how are we going to mitigate the effect on the town?
Isn't it just one million, or are you splitting with the state?
Oh, I'm sorry. If you're going to talk, you need to break your chair. It's very covered comment. Thanks.
Good question. Don't always split the two million with the state.
So it's not a fifty-fifty split, there's a sharing model, right? So any sale of the 2014 agreement or with lease, for that matter, is split with the state. So the town, that's the net about a million five, one six, based on the form. So I don't know if at this point it's best to sort of.
I have one follow-up question before transitioning. Did the, I mean, when you, when you had two bids, did the committee talk it off afterwards and say, hey, we want to change requirements, open it up, run a different RFI? But just, I'm just curious what kind of conversations to.
Yeah, we, we actually met, and then I was like a second, we met on the evening or a second, to talk about that. We had some direct questions when people attending our meetings, and we guess we did this. And I think the feeling was, we're tracking the master plan that was adopted in town, that, you know, at one point there were three thousand resident interviews, and we had at least one proposal that, you know, basically said, this is what we think you're asking for, and that, you know, we're, we're proposing to do it. So we didn't feel, based on the feedback we were getting from developers who didn't fit, that if we fitted, we would necessarily get a different result. And we didn't feel like, based on the master plan, not even literally the master plan, well, but it's five years of discussion that went into the master plan, that as a committee, we were willing to strike some of the criteria that people in town.
I have one logistical question. Can you tell me specifically why it is important for the town to do it July, June 1st, as opposed to at one point, people were talking about perhaps pushing it out to September? And now we have to reduce our forum, or at least the select board feels as though we need to reduce our forum in order to make sure that there are townspeople there to actually get to a two-thirds majority to be able to vote. So what is the time pressure here between receiving this, essentially their peer review, which kind of backs up whatever Trinity's doing, and whatever Trinity's numbers have come up with? And I'm not saying that your numbers are incorrect. In fact, you know, it's really that there's a lot more going on in town than just the Trinity proposal, in terms of the impact on the schools. But what is the, what's the date? What's the time pressure right now as opposed to being able to have a town meeting in which there would be potentially more people who were able to vote on something that is so important, uh, July 21st as opposed to in September?
Yeah. So, and, you know, the forum, I can't speak for the second on that, or if you're at their meeting last night, they had a pretty nice discussion on it. You know, I think from our point of view as a development committee, you know, we're trying to negotiate the sale of a property, and according to the towns that they want, if we're, you know, we're in a rising interest rate environment, we're in a rising construction cost environment, we realize it would be ideal to have the meeting at another time and not around the end of the school year, but to go from June to October, or maybe even November, in our view, creates other risks. One risk is the developer is still willing to do something at that point. You know, the bids were August of 2021, right? So we've already taken, you know, close to a year just to get to the point to see if the town voters, and I think, you know, Jim and his group were very clear with us.
We were, we were well aware of the timelines for these things.
So, you know, I, I think part of it is, and I, these guys can answer how much they've already spent, and that's, that's part of life as a developer, that, you know, about shedding any tears about that. But I think the reality is to do a project like this, it's expensive to, to, to complete your due diligence. And then if you're going to go to the next stage, designing water and sewer, figuring out how you fit apartments into these buildings that were previously that bathrooms, kitchens, it's, it's a lot of money. And, you know, I think they are very prepared to spend that. However, you know, they would like to know that the town is behind the project.
Um, thank you for your good humor in me being as pointed and directed, because this is the first time that we've really been able to talk about this as a committee. And given that it is coming up so soon, and we only have one more meeting before this, and that we have not really been able to speak to Trinity or anybody else, you know, before this point. It's almost like it's a fait accompli, but I think that we really do need to raise these issues.
Well, I've been following the project since I moved here, because the, this was going on the year we moved in, was the vote to actually purchase the property. I'm a little underwhelmed on how long it took for us to do something with it, to be honest. Yeah, it is. And of all the proposals, I saw the two proposals. Some reason I thought I saw another rendering, but I liked Trinity's the best, obviously, as well, because of the nature of which the historic buildings and everything else. So I agree with, with Jess. Obviously, we're here to talk about the impact on the schools, but also hear from them. And, and I do want to thank you for your time.
No, we appreciate.
Familiar with the time.
We all know how long it takes to develop.
And also, I think, you know, when the selectmen did sign the preliminary legal agreement, and formally kicked off this period of due diligence, it was the very end of March, right? And we did reach out at that time. However, everything's sitting at the end of the topic, you know, right? And it's not a good time for anybody. So we understand, and we appreciate it. We're, we're very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about it.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, when I pulled up, yeah, fully, I have a chair that was deployed, Dr. Morrison, thank you very much for having us here tonight. When I pulled up the apartment, it took ten minutes to find a space out there. I was terrified.
As were we all.
Only on Zoom. Fortunately, there's something else going on. Actually, you actually could have thought too. I don't, I wander around. Where do I go? Um, so where do I begin? I'm going to turn it over to Amanda in a minute, and she's got a lovely PowerPoint presentation for you. And then we're going to turn it on to Eric from Shear from Fujiya Plain Development, who will do a deep dive on what this means for the school department, the school committee, the kids, the kiddos, as somebody mentioned earlier. And we welcome your feedback on that. It has been peer reviewed, which we just got the peer reviewed literally this afternoon ourselves.
Absolutely.
Um, one thing I made clear before we were down, a first comment I want to make is, I can appreciate your questions about what makes Trinity so smart, that sixty developers decided to pass on this, and we decided to take it on. And sometimes I wonder about that myself. I mean, to answer that question, you have to know a little bit about us. We take on the hardest. We have people working in our company, many of whom have been there for twenty, twenty-five years. And their reason being is taking on projects like this. And why? Well, it requires a lot of skill, it requires a lot of experience. But I think what motivates most of us is the joy that we get when something like this gets, gets restored. It's many a dark night, many a low point, many a fraught moment along the way. But when this thing gets done, it will make all of that worthwhile. And that's kind of who we are as a company. I seldom read master plans that are this thick, but for some reason, I can't explain it. Maybe it's a little bit fortuitous, but I read this one from color to color. And I'm sure your comment about plans and master plan flying all over the place. That's why generally, I don't really spend a lot, but I was curious about this. And then when the RFP came out, our mission was basically to give a mirror and image to what that RFP wanted. The RFP incorporated everything, or most of what the master plan process had revealed. And what we did is we basically said, this is what the town wants, this is what it's going to get. And it requires a lot of moving parts, requires a lot of resourcefulness, a lot of experience, but in the end, courage. As I've said from the very beginning, this is a rescue mission. If this, something like this doesn't work, then it's inconceivable to me that those buildings can have a future. That to this day, as I drove around last night, the water's getting into those buildings. And as body gets into the buildings, freezes, and begins, the building begins to basically disintegrate in place. And as water gets in, that's exponential. It's not incremental, it's exponential. So, you know, we just saw this as a rescue mission, and we are prepared to take on the rest, as we already have, in the sharing proposal, and since then, investing funds into due diligence, because we believe there's a path to success here. We really do. It's fraught with uncertainty. We met with the Warren Committee last night, asked a lot of point of questions about how we prepared for the unknown. And I get nervous when I answer those questions, because as soon as you do it, you jinx yourself, right? But we think what's in front of us are challenges that we, we can take on. And we are really excited about this opportunity. Insofar as the schools are concerned, very much value what the school system here, as a result of the ownership, brings, and what will bring to this community. But, you know, at the same time, we also understood the challenge for us, this had to be a net positive revenue to the town. And to demonstrate that, we really had to focus, what is the impact of this project on the school system? How many kids are being generated, and what are the costs associated with that? And for that part of our presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Eric, who will share with you what his process is. And I'm sorry. And then, yeah, I can turn it over to Amanda, who's going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation, which I think she can give it a sweep. But that'll give you a better sense of what it is, where we come from, what it is we've looked at. And then we'll turn it over to Eric, and give you a deep dive in terms of what needs to get done. And then I'm available. I will be available. I want to be accessible tonight and in the future to answer whatever question can come up afterwards. Thank you.
Yes. I have one quick question. You're talking about this as a rescue mission, and I appreciate that. I actually used to visit clients at the Med Good State Hospital, when it's still operational. And even then, it looked pretty bad. Do you believe that the town actually was flawed in its decision-making by wanting to preserve these buildings? And is it something that perhaps we have, we are now putting ourselves into more debt and more difficulty by trying to?
I hope you give me credit to never go on record saying the town was flawed.
But it is my job to ask.
I would never do that.
And, and I, I actually don't know. I really don't. It's been a very long process of nine years.
Understanding your priorities, believe me, we are sensitive to that. But you have to understand that this is one of the most important historical assets in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Without a doubt, that could be Harvard's campus. It's reflective of the time in the late nineteenth century, when people really cared about the folks who lived there. That could be Harvard's campus. It's reflective of the time in the late nineteenth century when people really cared about the folks who lived there. And were prepared to put significant investment dog. I know you're kind of frowning.
Wait, go only because. But go ahead. Yes.
That honestly, when that's restored, you would think you were walking among the ivy-covered walls at Harvard. That's how beautiful. The setting, the pastoral setting, the location is reflective, I believe, of the commitment that today isn't necessarily there. So in preserving this important historic, historic asset, I think education and incidentally, we would welcome. Uh, an opportunity to take your kids up there, talk them about all about the details of restoration as an educational exercise. We love the process. We know a lot about it. I think some of the kids might enjoy that. As superintendent would be more than happy to arrange those kinds of things. We think your kids would really enjoy it. But having said that, this is a crucial historic asset. It really should be preserved. And whatever time, whatever troubles, whether uncertainty, we're prepared to make that commitment to try to get this vision into a reality. Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Trillan from the board. Uh, my name is Amanda Alberta. I work for Trinity Financial and I can go quick. Okay. I tried to wear my Medfield High School colors to be in school spirit today and I'm not going to waste your time with anything you don't need to know. I know that most of you are up to speed with this presentation. So in the back of the folders that I handed you, you have a printout of the presentation. You can follow along, folks can read screens, right? So I'm just going to walk you through our proposed program of the redevelopment, give you a quick update on new diligence. And then we will go into the fiscal analysis specifically affecting the schools. Like I said, you guys don't have to turn around. It's the same thing that's in front of you as it's on the screen there. So the proposed redevelopment program. Our proposal is to create three hundred and thirty-four units of, um, mixed income housing. So that's seventy-five percent market rate and twenty-five percent affordable. This is to, um. This is to coincide with the town's bylaw and also with the chapter forty D requirements. It restores all contributing historic buildings in the core campus with the collaboration of the Cultural Alliance of Medfield. And it makes sure that the campus remains accessible to the public, that it maintains the open space for public enjoyment. The town, as Todd told you, is retaining the Green, the Northfield and the Armeria. And it also creates housing that through our analysis is shown to be a net financial benefit to the town of Medfield. This proposed program was updated after the RFP. I'm sure you've heard that the number of three bedroom, three bedroom units was increased. That's because that is a state law. So in order for this housing to qualify under the state subsidized housing inventory, we had to achieve ten percent. Three bedroom units. That's a state law. And then as a result, once we were able to get inside of the, of the buildings and see how the units would lay out, the number of studio and one bedroom units rise in accordance. This is our site plan where this was submitted as part of the RFP. You can see that we paid special attention to the open spaces to have passive and active enjoyment. That we will revitalize the existing buildings in a way that will allow residents to enjoy their own space and common spaces. Um, we will have a clubhouse for residents that can be a center point for recreation. And really our goal here is to maintain the beauty that the town of Medfield residents have enjoyed. I know during COVID. The, the campus was a home to a lot of dog walkers and people with children and people just anxious to get outside of their houses. We like that. We don't develop gated communities. We really like when we can have an alliance with the camp, the cultural, um, arts program. And also to interact with the community as a whole. So this is one of the renderings that we propose. As you can see, um, we want to highlight the character of these buildings as they were and as they are. Um, and also add elements of art, lighting and other place making elements that can make this a truly enjoyable campus. Here's another view where you can see lots of people enjoying recreation. All of these roadways will remain public and accessible. For a quick update on new diligence, you'll see on the screen what we were tasked with as a part of the, um, the PDA that we signed with the town. So we've engaged with conversations with the town on strategies for noise mitigation on site. Um, we've engaged with relative agencies such as the, uh, the Massachusetts Historic Mission and DCAM. And we've also had communication with CAM to coordinate both projects. Mark Fugere has updated our fiscal impact report. That will be most of this presentation. We performed a rental market study. Um, again, we've been dealing with noise mitigation because of passive noises that can be heard throughout the site. So we worked with a sound engineer that modeled that for us and different scenarios for mitigation. We've worked with Vertex on a hazardous materials assessment. As many of you know, the site has hazardous materials such as lead and asbestos. This was not a surprise. But during due diligence, we've had the ability to really catalog those and look into some of the cost impacts. Um, also on the environmental side, we performed an environmental assessment report to truly understand the amount of releases on the site and what remediation will take. We had a firm called Existing Conditions go through the building and they use lasers to map out the dimensions of all of the buildings. I'm sure you can imagine with twenty-nine buildings on the site, it's not easy to catalog all of the ducks and crannies and to understand how units might fit in there. So that's really the way that we were able to see how the buildings would map out with the units and what we could, um, fit. It's like a puzzle. Also in due diligence, we've been working with our architects, icon architects on the schematic plans. This is how we were able to arrive at our updated, um, program. We've been working with our engineers, VHB on an updated traffic study and water and sewer capacity study, both of which have been peer reviewed and presented to their relative boards at this time. Uh, our associates in the fourth point reviewed all existing permitting documents and updated the list of federal, state and local permits that we will need to adhere to. We presented this to all of the landing boards last night. Our historic advisors, the Park Public Archaeology Laboratory coordinated with ourselves and town officials. And actually today on my desk, we received all of the part one, twenty-seven different part one approvals. So we are already engaged with the Massachusetts Historical Commission and the National Park Service.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Um, so one of the ways that, uh, we thought we would be able to mitigate three bedroom units was, uh, because frequently in historic buildings. They can reduce that by ten percent. Do you, what was the decision process that you know of through the Mass Historical Commission or through Mass Housing Authority? That then flipped that decision?
Certainly. So it's a DHC requirement.
Right.
Ten percent of the total units be three bedrooms. So in order for these units to count on a subsidized housing inventory for the town, we need to adhere to that under chapter forty B.
Okay. So my understanding though is that at one point we were trying to negotiate to make that not, uh, as necessary within the three bedroom units.
So I can comment on that.
Please do, thanks.
So when we issued the RFP, the town has a bylaw.
Right.
Twenty-five percent affordable. And so that was a requirement of the RFP. When the proposals were received, we got the discussions. It became clear that it was important that all of those departments qualify for the subsidized housing inventory, which then you're at this policy. So if the question is, why did, why was it ten percent three bedrooms to begin with? That's why I think you have the town clarified what was desirable, that we had some conversations, and this is what you're referring to, about. Whether that ten percent, you know, could be waived. And I know the experience on Trinity's side of the past, in particular historically has, it was not impossible. But I think we concluded we're not going to know that before special town meeting, or therefore it made sense to pursue this program.
So essentially, uh, that's off the table at this point, that we will simply be going to three bedrooms, whether we can get a waiver or not.
Can I comment on that?
Please.
Um, and I'm being totally candid. Uh, I don't think.
As am I.
Uh, I don't think that's going to work.
All right.
And, and the reason is because there's a lot of space here.
Yeah.
The only way that would work is if you go and give them a pretty convincing argument that there's not enough space. I think one of the things we did with this study is to determine a fit plan for the doors. What we sized is anticipating the worst case. Honestly, I'm just going to be honest. I don't think there's going to be a lot of traction on that. I don't think it's going to be welcomed by DHC.
I appreciate that. I really do. And I understand it simply that, and the reason I'm being so focused about three bedrooms, and I think you guys know this, but for our al friends at home. Is that three bedroom units bring larger populations of children to town and we adore children here, obviously. Um, but I think our largest concern has always been, how do we hold a larger population in, in a fiscally responsible way? And how do we make sure that each one of those kids and the kids who are continuing to be here and the families who depend on us to educate their children don't take a hit.
Sure.
To their education.
We, we, uh, we understand that. I think one of the things that characterized our proposal, we have a lot of studios around there as well.
And they see me in one of those someday.
And the virtue of that is it happens to align with the market because young people today cannot afford that three bedroom unit. They can't, if they're singles or young married couples, they just can't afford the rent. They can't afford to buy a home. So make the units smaller. They're, they're, they're going to be beautiful, but they're also more affordable, they're more accessible. But that doesn't necessarily bring a lot of children into the equation. What's driving the children is really most of the three bedroom units, unfortunately. I'm not sure we can get around that.
I do, I do appreciate.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the fact that you guys told us that very early on because we were able to submit our statement of interest to, to MSBA. And include that possibility in there because we were told very early on that that was a possibility that it could increase. So. That was very much appreciated. A lot of us keep that in the, the SOI and, you know, anticipation that more soon we come to that.
But I wanted to make sure that we had kind of a, a clarity about why that, that was.
Appreciate that. I think the other thing to understand is that, um. By virtue of the forty B requirements, the town gets credit for all three hundred and thirty-four units.
I know. Yeah.
So that's, uh, that's a significant benefit, which also I think protects the town somewhat from unwanted, unwelcome other projects which could regenerate more guests.
We, we understand it as the ultimate safe harbor. Thank you so much, Amanda. I do appreciate, uh, being interrupted. I just wanted to make sure that I did not.
Keep going. It's more provocative to have conversations than for me to run through this. I also just want to add before we decided that we had to increase the program, we did need the DHCB and previewed a project.
Okay.
So we really tried to do the groundwork to make sure that our answer was.
Thank you.
Okay. So finally with legal, we did the PDA, we did the term sheet. We're hoping to have the LDA as soon as yesterday. And we've got entitled report for the site. No problems there. Just to give you a snapshot of the schedule, we are now in June of twenty twenty-two. Rearing upon a special town meeting vote, and we want to make sure you all feel prepared going into. After that, we would really kickstart our community outreach and design development. There's a lot that has to go in, like Todd said, in the way of road and sewer design and all of that fun stuff. After that, we would start securing the major permitting, like we previewed the landing boards yesterday and make sure that our financing was secured. And then in March of twenty twenty-four, we anticipate construction commencing and having about a two-year construction period. That would be finished in twenty twenty-six. So I just want folks to keep in mind that this is a long-term project. Here's how. Once construction, we send the lease up and come off original. So this is a long time that we're talking about. And now I'm going to pass it over to Mark Fugere, who did our fiscal impact.
Can I ask one? I'm sorry. No, this is.
No, please.
May I ask about how you intend to roll out the units? At one point, there was a thought that you would open our units at once. Um, and then at another point, there was a thought that you'd open on a rolling basis. And that obviously impacts how we are able to. Hold children into our, into our schools and plan ahead. I mean, obviously we do not have an elementary school project in place right now. And yet we are busting at the seams. So that is a really important question for us.
So, um. In the end, we don't really have, uh, enough information to. Propose a detailed construction presentation. One scenario is we have one big contractor that take it all on. Another one might break it up. We haven't figured that out yet.
But where in the timeline would that happen?
But, but I, well, I think the, the timeline is two thousand and six that would have a certificate of our project is.
Twenty-six. No, I'm just saying.
The, um.
Decision-making around small.
To qualify what I just said, for the twenty-five percent for the units, there will be a lottery. It can be a local, uh, there'll be a lottery with a local preference. So, and that's, you know, people sign up and then you income qualifying that based on where they are on the lottery and where they are in terms of preference. Uh, they would get first access to the units. That could take, sometimes that could take six months. Just leasing this many units, you know, I think we're performing a lease up that's over a.
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months.
Okay.
And that's a project the size, that's, you have to go back into the margin just to assume you're paying utilities, you're paying taxes. You've got staff there already. So a two-year lease up period is what traditionally is.
And I, I do want to be clear, um, that this is not a concern for us on our part around affordability or what can be. For children who may come into town with families who are going for affordable housing. Honestly, there's almost no such thing as affordable housing right now. So that is a very wide range of kids and families and we welcome that. Um, it's really more about how do we launch our plan as we're going into our strategic planning for the next five years? To figure out when the town will need to start doing, or if they need to do an override. You know, two and a half percent does not necessarily go very far over through the time we're increasing our student populations. You know, we really do have some plannings of town to be looking at how we, even if there is income coming in. It's not going to be quite enough to offset all of the things that we take care of. So.
Yeah, cause I, I like the, like a kind of the concern opposite. It's not, you're making a proposal on plan to develop it. And we, and we're excited to hear your impacts. I think a lot of this dialogue here is also for the committee to take into consideration as they're going back to selectment. And so they're hearing our concerns, you know, I know nothing you can do about them, but just so that people hear them and the people at home hear them too. Cause people, I don't know why, but they actually watch these things when they get posted on YouTube later on. So.
Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's not.
Yes, I actually ran into someone in the work committee this afternoon. Um, and I agree. I think that, yeah, they're probably. You know, will hear our concerns as well. And there's a reason why we were trying to build a new elementary school where we have space issues. And so I will let this gentleman though get going because there is a, the, of, have so much questions because I think. Like I said, I think you've done, you're, you're sharing your diligence with us. The question, my comments will be more for the public and for the town to take into consideration of, of, on behalf of you. So I guess, I guess I wouldn't want to say we're critiquing your work because we're not, or like. Want to make sure we're asking the right questions. Make sure we have all the information and we're asking them on behalf of our constituents at home. So a lot of. Sorry, sir.
Okay, Eric, Mark, whatever your name is.
Jeff, my developer. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. Uh, this is actually my third time in the community working on different projects and. A third time around with Dr. Morrison. So, uh, we know each other very well and we're a very beautiful community. And, um. Just to touch on, um, so fiscal impact report has, has two purposes. One. We look at, uh, what type of revenue could potentially come out of the development? And then we look on the other side of the equation. It's what type of impacts are going to occur to various town departments? And the three departments we typically concentrate on, depending on the program, obviously, is police, fire and school. Um, and that's the case here. Obviously this DPW will be involved in a few other departments, but the main focus was on those three departments that have direct impact. Along with DPW. So just to talk about timing again, not to labor the point, but, um. The projects that were highlighted that are under construction today in the community that were highlighted by the peer review, they're under construction now. So very soon you're going to know what type of impacts are coming out of those projects. Actually, one of them I did at this one. So I'm going to be interested to know how many kids come out of that. Um, we're four years out, um, and it's just noted it's going to take twenty-four months lease out, you know. These children aren't going to drop out of the sky and show up on September first, the first year. They're going to.
Don't laugh, it's happened.
So, well, I mean, it's just not going to be available. So it's, 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 um, it's going to take some time to roll out. You're going to have a good idea very soon, within six months, what's happening with these projects that are under construction now and then will be coming later. So from a planning perspective, and I'm a big advocate of planning as, as a professional planner, uh, that's, that's good for, for the townspeople here. So, um, not surprising, uh, the school department is, uh, one of the biggest budgets in the community, uh, fifty-seven point nine percent. Not surprising, the school department is one of the biggest budgets in the community, fifty seven point nine percent of the budget is his schools. I met with the superintendent, like this promoted, noted relative to the project. He's very accessible and very helpful with this report. I couldn't completed the section without his input, actually twice we met to talk about her. Enrollment trends. Looking at the three components, elementary, high middle and high school, elementary lately has been relatively stable. There has been some decrease in enrollments in the middle and high school over the past six or eight years. Which actually is not surprising and it's common in many communities in the region. For this project, we looked at a couple of different methodologies to try to come up with an estimate on another school children. Which is always a very important question that you folks typically have. We have quite an in-depth database. I went through that database and came up with some communities that I felt would reflect Medfield. And what type of impacts may occur here. There were conquered three projects in Newton and Lincoln Woods, a total of over a thousand eleven hundred units. We pulled out the one beds, which typically don't have that many school age children in them. And came up with a derivative or ratio of point four nine two students per unit. When you apply that to our project, we come up with an estimated sixty six school age children. I also have in there the park apartment building, which is an existing apartment building in the community. That's a little bit different because that's a hundred percent affordable, but I wanted to give you some reference of that. Because there is a difference between market rate, and that was mentioned earlier, and affordable units as far as the impact on the town. But the park gives us some some guidance in the future, and I'll get into that later. Another option we looked at is I have access to data of over a thousand units where we actually know what the enrollment is and the unit type. And as I noted, and as you'll see in this table. There's a big difference between the number of students, the chair mentioned this, in the market rate units versus the affordable units. Not surprising, there's more children in the affordable units. And that's the case and it grows as it goes from one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. With this methodology, we came up with sixty one estimated school age children. So we've come up with a range of approximately sixty one to sixty six school age children that may reside in a proposed development. I believe superintendent vetted these with the town consultant, NASDAQ, and they supported these findings. And I've used them elsewhere in the region for other work. One of the questions that Dr. Morrison was very concerned about, and it's always hard to predict, is, you know, if thirty kids show up in first grade, that's a problem. And what type of spread is that going to be? And looking at the data from the park development. Gives you a good indication of what might happen here. They're really spread throughout the grades. There's really no single large component in from that complex. And based on the percentages of what grades at that facility is what I project here at this facility. It's the best guess, I guess, that we have. The fact that that's here in the community already gives you an indication of what might happen in the future. It's not surprising that more of the students are in the lower grades. That's typical. But it is spread out throughout the grade levels. To give you an idea of where that impact might be coming from, which is obviously a concern that was just discussed. So when we look at costs, it's a couple of different approaches that we use. One is average cost approach, and that's basically looking at two sets of derivatives. You know, the total cost of the of the school department divided by the number of students, which I think averages here about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. It's a very simple, simple way to look at it from a cost perspective. That number is 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 interesting, but it really isn't helpful when you look at. What's the impact really going to be on the school district when one new child comes into the school district? And what we try to do is is drill down a little bit more and come up with a better idea, talking with superintendents and other people in the community. Which is called the marginal cost approach, where you interview department heads that know what's going on in the department. You provide data to them, like the police and fire. We gave them data on how many calls to be expected from this development. We met with the deputy police chief, for example, and he didn't believe, based on his experience with knowing part of other developments. That his staffing is going to be impacted by the project. However, we're still carrying cost approach to that. But this gives you a better indication when you look at the marginal cost versus the average cost. So as I said, we sat down with Superintendent Miles to look at, you know, what type of impacts this project would have on the school. And one of the first things he recognized was most likely going to be another bus up in that area, which is going to cost an annual cost of forty thousand dollars. Special education, it's also another obviously important component. From the finance department, it provides an average costing for K through five at sixty twelve. And based on your statistics, approximately fifty percent of Medfield students obtain special service services. Applying that to the project, whereas something about ten children may need those services for a total cost of a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars a year. We also talked about. What those, again, the moment spread would be for those children. Again, it'd be approximately fourteen children. In the memorial, fourteen in wetlock, thirteen, fourteen in Dale, ten, eleven middle and thirteen, fourteen in high school. So it's a spread. On that. So as far as the total cost, we're looking at transportation at forty thousand dollars, special education costs a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. We're setting aside three teachers each over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a person. The teachers was. You know, obviously, the concern is if, especially in the elementary school, which is the most sensitive to enrollment, that if a large cluster of. One grade came into the school system, that might trigger the need to hire another teacher. And that's where that cost came from.
And I just don't understand it. When I was looking at the table a minute ago, you got estimated number of grades K through five is six. And estimate the number of grades six through twelve is four. Yeah, I just don't understand why the four and that's six.
Ten, ten students.
Okay.
Based on fifteen percent. Based on fifteen percent. Which is so low.
And I know that we're doing a numerous amount of evaluations.
We're between thirteen.
Thanks. Clarification on this.
And is the is the average teacher salary?
Average teacher salary eighty nine thousand, plus we added benefits on there as well. So. Help insurance review.
Just carried by the state of the teacher costs are carried on our budget line. And sorry, town.
So we, in my report, I actually did some average costing as well. The master plan back in twenty eighteen, I think, had an average cost of maybe thirty five hundred dollars. Of the four thousand dollars, I added, I added on to that approximately brought up like five thousand dollars. So in the low range, I have approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars in school costs based on the master plan study. So somewhere between three hundred fifty to five hundred thirty five thousand dollars a year. In potential costs. We're estimating over one point three million dollars in revenue in the community. So this is tax positive, over seven hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis. Even when you add in other costs of police, fire, roads and a few other town departments. So again, this is a physically positive project, it's a very exciting project. It's a preservation redevelopment of a existing important piece of property in the community, and it helps you with your body B compliance. And this should be a much more appropriate project and and more beautiful project than some other body B developments that I've seen posed in the community that. Wouldn't as well receive what I understand. I'll be happy to answer any questions or if you have any other questions for.
So we've never used the thirty eight hundred forty two that's in the master reuse master plan. The numbers we use are per pupil expenditures, which come out of the end of your report. And we use the average teacher salaries. We use real numbers. I'm not sure where those numbers came from, quite frankly. I know that Michael had given that media a lot of information. Probably two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And they came up with that, but we really haven't sat down to to see what they got that number because I think people are trying to. Look at that and and say that way, per pupil expenditures, you know, fifteen to sixteen thousand, where's this marginal number coming from? So we haven't used that number at all.
It's not put noted anywhere, at least I couldn't find it in the master plan. It's like I, the peer review consultant asked me that, where that came from. I mean, the master plan did estimate, you know, a much higher impact from this residential development, which obviously could have covered a whole. Range of of land uses over a hundred and seventy five, two hundred and forty six children. So this is much less than that, but. You know, this is a more conservative number. I think it's more drilled in and and more realistic than the average costing that was done a few years ago.
And honestly, from a instructional impact at schools, you know, with this, you know, with the purposes of this committee. By role, you know, if I can turn repeat the space and class size at the elementary level is a large concern. We can add more children, we can't turn them away, and that increases the size of, you know, how much we're squishing into classrooms. Because we would hire other teachers, but we might need to hire more aides to be in the classrooms, but we don't have any more physical classrooms.
It also benefits, I mean, it also dings our revolving accounts. And our ability to manage tuition. The more children we have, the fewer full day and pre K kindergarten classes we or pre K classes we're able to offer. Which then doesn't allow us to build up enough of a head of steam to be able to kind of mitigate the costs of tuition to pursue free kindergarten. Which will become, I think, probably the law of the land at some point. I don't know when, but it certainly helps us. So our space needs are not necessarily only about whether we can fit the kids we have now. But it's about how we are able to provide. Community wanted education. I think that full day kindergarten is very important. And we simply will not have. You know, if we had fifteen kids, that's that is quite.
Well, that takes our. Takes our max out of twenty one, twenty two, brings in the twenty three, and we start saying we need another teacher.
And then it's not so much.
But we don't actually have a.
It's what we have to room for.
Yeah, we don't actually have a place to have them teach.
You know, something that Mark and I had talked about, because you really just don't have the crystal ball to see where these kids are going to create. Right? So we could. With the park, there was very little impact because they were spread out among thirteen grades, dated twelve. But if we get like we did a few years ago, where a bunch of families moved in and they all had first grade kids, well, that, you know, jacked our.
Sorry, that's.
A lot of that.
Who did that year?
Sorry, what's your year? So you just don't know, and we can't predict that, but that's something that we have to be talking about and planning for because we don't know where the kids are going to come in. And I just so you know, as of. Ten o'clock this morning, seven out of our nine grade one classrooms for next year, we have twenty three. Because we had forty. Give the exact number because I'll be quoted for the rest of my life on it, but we have, you know, thirty something kids that have signed up for next year that don't live in town yet that are moving in the spring and the summer. And most of those kids were more.
I don't know if I went and driven down North Street recently, but I did to go to Dover Sherwood High School this past weekend, and every other house is for sale. So on both sides of the road, and those are not two bedroom units. So.
We just can't predict that part, so.
But we can, we can make reasonable assumptions that young kids come in because that is how our population is always wrong.
I think Mark and I talked about this, that when we went to MSBA, they told us that we had the highest kindergarten to. Birth to kindergarten ratio they'd ever seen in a town, which means that people move here after their kids are born. So they don't move here without kids, and then they have kids and when they're two, three and four, they move to that field. It was the highest I've ever seen.
They have two or three, four. It is because it is a great community and very much in that. But there will be significant impact.
I guess those, that's, these are obviously questions, concerns for the town side to take into consideration. As far as the project itself, I think it's, I'm very excited about it. I'm like, can't wait to see that gentleman painting in the picture, you know?
Stranger.
And with the history of this particular facility, you never know.
When I look at this number, I think of overrides, you know.
I already said that word.
And that's what just makes me pause, the stressors on on the on the taxpayers, on the school, you know. I feel like our budget, we've got to fight tooth and nail for whatever we for whatever we get.
As does the town. In a lot of ways. And so it all comes from the same pot. You know, but a million five is not going to necessarily make up for most of its costs, and we don't expect it to, but. I'm sorry, go ahead. It's just, it feels like there's a level of concern that we all share.
Yes, so I just wanted to to state really what I see and just my my hesitation. Yes, I am very excited for this project. But that's just, that's my concern. So I I pause.
Can I just ask further about that? So, and I know we only saw. Part of the presentation for Mark as far as this whole report, but. If the projections, which, you know, the peer reviewer said were reasonable, I think Dr. Morrison, by reasonable, other department heads in town are reasonable, if they're accurate. It would be. Plus seven hundred thousand dollars a year of revenue to the town in taxes after all of these costs are paid. So.
Going to the town, but not necessarily guaranteed for the school district.
Trying to understand your question. You talked about overrides. I mean, at least do this as a project that, you know, according to the numbers we have. You know, pays its own way, right? It's a positive for the town. It's very important on the development pay. Structure, some of the town's not paying for infrastructure, the town's not occurring debt.
But if we have to then buy modulators, for example, so how much?
Increase the number of classrooms that we have in these new school projects or any of these things.
Yeah, because I feel like the other thing that I recognize that you're not, we wouldn't be opening for years, right? And your your numbers right now are looking not huge in regards to student population that we would be able to absorb, but we've got three other projects in front of us that will be opening in the next couple of years. And those are going to be impacting the student population as well, and the facilities in specifically. The elementary schools, as Leo said, we're already in a space right now where we don't have space. So then we would be looking at these extra things of. Bringing in or buying in modulators or things like that to. Have classrooms and have space for these kids to be taught. And I feel like that's that's the part that those extras are things that we need to be considering that. Don't seem to be reflected right now.
And don't necessarily build a strong school system. I think that we have all been very concerned. About having what we call kind of happy eighth of Medfield, you know, trailer park modulators to be able to accommodate. All of our kids and it's not, it's not a secure school environment. It was certainly not comfortable. And it doesn't really necessarily push forward.
Module is gonna be nice.
They also have to be walked between.
Yeah, but you can.
You know, there are.
Full foundations underground and you can make them last a long time.
I think that we as, we have decided that modular is not a permanent solution to all the things we do. So I want to be very serious about this because I think the committee has talked about this. It's not a great permanent solution. And I don't expect Trinity in any way to perform, and I want to let you know that to to mitigate these issues. But I do think that there are things that we need to be looking at in terms of. Impact to our school that are more soft costs and more difficult to pin down, but possibilities. I look forward to the future, but boy, do I like to go in for it. And I think that our town desperately needs us to be able to plan for those expenses.
Michael, out of curiosity, would you happen to have a budgetary number for yearly lease class on a module? I don't know if you have one that's current.
I have a question. So what you're saying is the the one point three billion dollars of revenue to town from taxes. You wouldn't necessarily be able to earmark that to offset the increase to the schools?
Unfortunately, that's not how the process works.
It's not how the process works, and it's also, we have.
It's up to say that it can't be.
Physical policy that does not necessarily allow us to have as much flexibility with the free cash that might be coming in.
Well, that's, it's just.
It's a constant negotiation.
Right, this is the tax. So we would hit the same process that we go through every year. That the town goes through every year where we present our needs, but again, they can all, when we talk about the override. Where we present our needs, but again, they can, when we talk about the override, the two and a half percent, it can only go up so much. Even with the revenue coming in, I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
I guess that leads into my next question, if, you know, so we're showing one point three million in revenue to offset the additional five hundred thousand.
Actually, Johnny, can you come up?
Yeah, sorry.
People at TV land can see you and you can kind of.
Hey, Johnny Martinez, this is developing company. Is there a tipping point at number of students where, let's say this number is like eight thousand dollars per student? You exceed a certain amount, that number goes up, and maybe it's because of physical building or whatever, to where the numbers start to not make sense, you know?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I think that'd be difficult to determine right now based on, we could look at projected enrollment, try to determine what that might be. I mean, but right now, I think that'd be tough to, be tough to do for next year, so as the year after, but I think we can look at. What we have for projections from NASDAQ and try to figure that out from there to see what that tipping point might be.
I mean, like already, you heard Dr. Martin say that we're at twenty three students, which is above our, our recommended level of students per classroom.
I can't add a teacher because there's no space to do it. If we did, we have to get rid of a preschool or have to get an air.
Right, so that means in order to support that, we may have to put, you know, an aide in every second first grade classroom, so there's a cost to that.
Which then becomes a significantly larger sum of money than simply, you know, an aide in every first grade classroom becomes a much larger. Amount of money than simply hiring one teacher for your population. So it's, it's not always, as Mark said, it's not always an average, it's not a great way of going about things. It's really about how we have to build our budget every year based on the number of children that we have and the space that we have.
And planning, and planning for, it's, it's just planning. It's like you said, this is good information that allows us to plan and talk and have the dialogue with the town side. With the other committees in town, warrant committee, so that when it comes time that perhaps an override is necessary. Which usually is in some sort of cycle, they all know what inflation is, and two and a half percent is not it, so. So we know that we're going to have to tackle that, so we know that we're already in kind of crisis mode, if you will, from that, from our elementary building. Situation, I am kind of stressed about what the summer is going to look like with the number of housing sales.
So like, that's my brain, just, I see that, like, when we have this additional expense, town says, well, deal with it. And I keep hearing the one point three million of revenue, five, you know, to offset it. It would be great if the town were to effectively almost earmark it, say, as the other enrollment goes up, you know you're going to get that. I don't think, you know, that's not going to happen. You know, but, but it is, I can just see.
But it could, right, I mean, we could have conversations with the town side and say, let's, you know, based on the amount of kids that, that come, come to our schools from that development. X amount of dollars is guaranteed. I mean, chapter seventies earmarked for education, right? Why can't this be a local chapter seventy to earmark education?
I mean, it is a conversation. It, it at least, they, they, you know, six years from now, they say, you said, who talked, when did we talk about this? It's like when my boss issues quotas, like we give all the reasons why it doesn't make sense to them. Right, and that's what I think will happen, right? It's, it's like, it'll be like, okay.
What can we do to make this more palatable?
I'm sorry.
What can we do to make this more palatable and less scary, so to speak?
I guess it's, it's the dialogue, for me, it's the dialogue. Yeah, I think it's, for us, it's the dialogue. We have to continue the dialogue about our discussing points, right? And I'm, I don't know, I'm skeptical that we will see a new building project by the time this, this facility opens. Or this place opens. Right, this will be done first. And.
As opposed to the, and, and.
Right, so I think we should just, we. Put this project aside, we just need, as a committee, start moving forward with mantra classrooms on our, on Dale and Memorial to. Ease the stress, Dale can definitely cannot handle any more kids, they just can't, so. And this is a side from this project, as he said, there's two more projects, or three more projects already opening now, right?
So we open this year, one, I guess, is open now, so you'll know.
Two or, no, actually, so, I was going to ask, because, I mean, this is, I think, our, just cover our questions at the committee level about our. Peer review that we received from assignment today, so I guess the ultimate question for you is how accurate have you found projections to pass around? Of those school age children, because if you look at these three other developments that references chapel. Ninety percent occupied, it's homeownership.
Where's that? Okay.
Okay, so that's ninety percent occupied now. And it's, you know, it's, it's kind of. Menfield Meadows, Route twenty seven there is one third ownership, two thirds rental, it's eighty six percent occupied now. And the Fora project, that's still under construction. So if you look at the peer review, it says. So, but if you, you know, follow this analysis. He says, okay, aside from, you know, what you have with this project, right, this is the general agreement about projections for this project, you could have up to, yeah, between. Eighty four to one hundred and twenty four school age children at those three other. But, you know, doing some research with the town today, again, two out of those three buildings are. Are between eighty six and one hundred percent occupied. There's only thirty. School age, there's only thirty bedfields, students in those two buildings. So if you back that out of his range. You know, his projection would suggest you would, you would have to see, you know, between fifty four. And ninety school age children at the Fora project, the Legion project, which is only fifty six apartments, right? So there's more than one school age kid per apartment.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Like, I'm just asking, like, how in your experience have you found these numbers?
We have projections materialize as high as they can. We haven't seen that, we didn't see that in park, we didn't see that in these. I think what we were concerned about, what I have to worry about as superintendent, they have to worry about the school pay, is the potential is there for that to happen. Right, the, the amount of bedrooms are there, their kids can fill those bedrooms if parents move in, so we haven't seen that number materialize, but the potential is there. I think that's a concern.
And when we kind of play close to the edge and think, oh, maybe it won't happen, maybe it won't happen, that is when it happens. And or it happens in a way we didn't necessarily expect, that all of a sudden you are looking at far more, you know, at one point. Sort of fifth grade, but all of a sudden, you know, ended up having significantly more children than it ever started.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's, and it's just where we are now compared to, and you're coming with a future project, and so, and. You're coming on the tail end of budget season and failed school building projects, and we still have space issues that we're dealing with. So we're talking about what else is coming in. Quality of education is our job, and that's what, that's what I'm hyper focused on. And space is required to have good instruction and pedagogy is just required. So, and I think that's what, like I said, I, I feel like we're taking it out on you, but we're really not. That's why I keep reinforcing that.
This is not.
The work you guys all done has been great, and I'm really excited about the project, so totally, I think the fact that we still own a hundred or, you know. Two thirds of the acreage and the frontage, you're, I think I saw you leaving views of the river. I saw that you marked that for all those views. I'll be picking on my units. I probably should have been there in its original intent, but especially after this last couple of years. But I guess, but we're just airing this to other committees so that the message that is there that the schools are concerned, and so therefore. It could be echoed with other committees. I think it's maybe one of the things that we haven't been able to do well because of the pandemic. And we're not going to make that mistake again. I know the folks on the town side, Jeff works very closely with Christine and her team. And their teams work very closely, so it's not that powerful worry about, but it's the people who run the town, and the committees who are both, just like yourself, and. And they want to understand what they need to do to support this for this too, so.
So Todd, just, I'm sorry, that's just to your point, you know, in the, in page three of the peer review. Where it says consequently, the combined impact of Metfield State Hospital and three other projects may increase enrollment by one forty five to one ninety. So within that context, and that's the example he gave, I responded. Then the level of new enrollments could exceed current classroom capacity, particularly if the school is serving students in early grades. Potentially requiring the construction of a model classroom. So given the context of additional one forty five and one ninety, yeah, we're all into modules. But if that doesn't happen, then maybe not, you know, so I think that's the key piece there is that when Carl was giving me that scenario. He said, so it, it, it's your sixty six, which I agree with, and, and he agreed with, but then he brought in the one forty five to one ninety. Then something like that would be a huge impact on us, but I'm not saying it's.
Question was really about how accurate the projections were in the past, because when you, you actually look at it, you find out there's, you know, there's thirty.
It was a scary numbers, as Jeff mentioned, like two years ago, they gave us scary projected numbers that. And whether it was COVID, they didn't materialize, we don't know, we saw it dip because of COVID, some people homeschooled or moved out. Same time.
Those kids seem to be coming.
It was.
We are, you know, we have.
And then they move in.
Just this year since COVID.
So the flood out of the city centers, you know, bringing people out of the cities to here and, and midway in Melissa, I mean, we all see in the property values. The craziness outside of open houses when you see twenty five cars.
Melissa's going to have two completely new school facilities within the next five years, so. People are willing to drive another five miles, just saying. But in any case, I mean, I think really the conversation here too is about how do we mitigate these issues? And be quite precise, it's about, it's about money and about the town negotiating. Your contract so that it is not only, and hoping that you take into account. As you work with Trinity and Trinity works with the development committee. That you take into account not only what you see as maybe, you know, forty thousand dollars here for a bus or whatever. But there are significantly larger soft costs over time, and they will be triggered by Trinity as well as these other groups. And I'm not saying that these other organizations shouldn't have local agreement issues or local agreements, but. And I'm not looking for big pockets at all, but what I am saying is that when we have an arts organization that gets a donation of a million dollars, and I don't know. When that meeting occurred, where that networking occurred or anything else, but that is clearly not something that is being offered to mitigate the costs. Or the schools or for the town, and, and I want to make sure that, as we're talking about this, we talk about it in a way that is realistic. That this is a great project, we like it very much, but it is not all rainbows and puppies. That there will be a tax impact, perhaps later, perhaps sooner, but there will be a tax impact, and there will be an impact on the process in schools. And we need to be very clear about that, because otherwise. Whoever is sitting here in this seat four, five, six years from now, will be hearing about how you guys spend too much money on the students that you have. Or that you do not have enough space, and why aren't you doing that? It is our responsibility to pay it forward. To the kids who will live here six years from now, and the families who live here six years from now.
Well, why didn't?
Whether they.
Ask the questions.
Right, whether they are living at the hospital land, or they are living just in town. That's our responsibility to bring the best school system that we can for the education of our students, and that's by charter of law. So that's very much, and I think unless we have other questions that we really want to talk about in terms of. Okay, go ahead, and then I think we'll wrap this up, because we've been doing this for a while, and then please have any reflections that we'd like to, for us.
I was going to say, were you going to keep public, but I wasn't sure if that gentleman had something.
I will do that after.
Question just about the access to the site, one of the. One of the things about the site, it's, it's beautiful, it's great, it's big, but if you're there. To get to the center of town, you know, I'm not, I don't recall, is there going to be a sidewalk that connects it to? Can you go by sidewalk from the site to the center of town? Would it be, is there a plan, is it going to tap into the sewer system, or is it going to be septic? Those are some of the questions I guess I had around.
I noticed that there's a very nice sidewalk to catch you about two thirds of the way.
Yeah, it's like that, yeah.
And it's unfortunate it doesn't go all the way, because that would be terrific. We are extending the water lines, and we are extending the sewer line, so we will be connecting with this sewer.
So that was a no on the sidewalks. That was a.
It's not part of the deal.
Nice, no, but that was a no.
I'll take nice no.
No, good, just wanted to clarify.
Maybe we could put something on the rail system there.
Well, okay, so, do I have any other questions from the committee about this around the project, around numbers, around anything else? Or do we feel that we can go back and then kind of generate what our response might be? But now do I have any comments from you guys, and I'll bring comment into this.
I just wanted to close by thanking you. Yeah, there's a reason there's only two people, one was, you know, was going to be a real problem with schools.
And I do want to tell you that we do like this project. Again, it is our absolute responsibility to make sure that we're asking every single question.
Not sure, I completely understand. If I was in your position, I'd do the same thing. I might not ask the questions as nicely as. But I, I will say that. We. Economics here are very fragile, and, you know, we're, we're doing a lot outside of just building the house. And we thought it was important to make the commitment to the artists because they've been the primary advocates to this target. Frankly, they're going to be right smack in the middle of that site. If something doesn't happen in that building, it's going to be a problem for us, right? I'll void it out. That's not going to be a good look for the. So, there was some self-interest involved.
We can understand that, yeah.
Last night at the Warren Committee meeting, which I don't like very well, I hope.
Were they nicer?
They smiled a lot. But, you know, they don't have the specific focus you folks do, and we, we completely understand, but. But they, they asked a question which. You know, I, I thought was very insightful, and they said, of everything that's going on here. All the challenges, houses waste, infrastructure, raising the money, marketing this, raising the, the deck and every, what's the biggest thing you worry about? And I said, the Tommy on May twenty first. June twenty first.
You did ask for my US radio.
And it's, it's terrifying, it's terrifying, because I'm sure you're feeling it in this town, it sounds everywhere. There's insurgency going on. People aren't happy. It's compelling, and as much as this project makes sense, it will be in the best interest of the town. There are people going to show up there on June twenty first. So.
We've had that same experience.
I'm saying, I, I, so if you're aligned with you right now.
I think there's been a lot of interest in making something out of this project, though, there are a lot of people that moved in here and people who. Put a lot of work into the purchase of it, or the, a lot of work went into that, that entire thing. I remember that, I think it was an information item. The center, a nice house, right when I first moved in. So, just to fast forward, I, I, I don't think, I think it's going to, there's going to be a lot of excitement, I think, around it too. As much as you'll get some of the nasers, I'm optimistic for you on the. Yeah, I am, yeah.
I don't know if I'm optimistic for you on the last half day of school after a three day weekend, which might be why the corn was produced. But I'm optimistic that people will see that this is our best option and would want it back.
That, I will, I'll say, but I just want to say, I critically, that we understand that your mission. Feels that a great school system, again, as a result of, you know, leadership, we want to do everything that we can to enhance that as best we can. You know, our door is going to be wide open, anything we can do to help, I, I just would like to be able to say, yeah, we'll build a new school.
We don't want that. We just want mitigation.
I do have one final question, and, and it's only based on what the. Is it, I'm, I'm assuming your planning does, and I do a lot of, with the home office, I do a lot of news listening, so it's just. The byproduct of it, the possibility of a recession a year, you know, within twelve to eighteen months. Is the project recession proof, if you will, in the sense of, is it something we would need to worry about in that sense?
I hate answering those questions. But what I can say from the record is that we've been in business for thirty five years, we've been through four recessions, including the most recent one called it. We've never failed it.
Recession's coming up.
Can I say just one thing too, before, before the, one thing that early on in our committee that we focused a lot on is what, what's the ultimate downside to the town? If we kind of do nothing, what could, you know, twenty million dollars to rip down buildings, we looked at unfriendly forty B coming in, six, seven, you know, whatever. So those are other things that. So those are other things that as much as this might keep you up at night for these few units, you know, think if you're competing with. Yeah, think about if you're competing with twenty million dollars in mitigation in the town later on, if they, these bills, the buildings start to fail. Or if a larger development moves in that you don't have any say over. And then that's just almost becomes insurmountable.
Are the service tunnels going to be preserved?
You know your stuff.
I went through the.
We believe that with the fillers stuffs.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah. They are.
So you're just filming.
Unique problems.
Yeah.
That we have to send a speed longer in there to do a. Speed like there's someone that was in the.
Oh, I'm well aware.
I got the. Got the opportunity to do the ones in Boxboro Hospital before they renovated.
Which we can talk about. Horrible example.
He used to host a haunted house in it and sent kids in there.
Yeah, so it'd be a challenge extra rent for that one, there's a few where a ghost fires.
We are looking forward to different marketing.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
Thank you for trying to.
Making yourself available.
You know, you guys.
Thank you for allowing us to make this point.
Now, this dialogue was.
I very much appreciate your offer of help and will present a list to you.
I mean, I guess, you know, my, I think it's been a very good conversation, there's some good takeaways. I, you know, I do kind of come away from Mark's report and the peer review and the comments that you made, that. There doesn't seem to be a big difference of opinion of the fundamental assumptions about this project. I think that's, I think that's a real positive.
Yeah, and just because it's right doesn't mean there's no impact, this is two different.
Absolutely, right?
Two different points.
That's what we're talking about, it's the impact, we're not having an argument about, you know, these things don't make sense or we don't believe us.
Yeah.
I think that's, we're all fortunate.
This sounds like a future chair of the school building.
What are you doing to that? Yes, and so I'm going to take public comment. Are you here for this? Are you high? No, 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 you're it. I just approached and tell us your name. And then we will start this.
In the big business, Oriole Road, that field. Yeah, it's a great presentation, great to see you folks here, I've seen some of your stuff online, so, you know. Todd, all your work. Just as a parent, you know, to be honest with you, right, you know, I mean, I heard one of the media, the media at like COA or. We weren't, we weren't in wine in town, I, I don't know about that. You know, as a parent, I'm kind of worried, you know, that when I see this, I'm going to be having this sadness that my son isn't in a new school that just lost. And to me, just to put it, you know, call, call, we'll call it what it is. Is that. It's tough for me to be super excited about it when some of the proponents, opponents of the school for my young son are big proponents of this. And then it's scheduled on the last day of school. You know, we've seen special town meetings, things fail in special town meetings just because somebody got up and said, this isn't right, this should be addressed at the annual town meeting with the whole town, not a reduced forum, not. A small number, and frankly, some of that stuff's failing at special town meetings. They, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
Twelve months to get people comfortable with that, that this was the right decision, moving forward, it's going to be the best. I wasn't kidding about the drink, I'm welcome to talk to you a little bit more.
So if this doesn't pass, sorry, if this does not pass on the twenty-first, is this dead?
Yes.
Dead?
Yeah.
No resurrection?
We would be impressed to, I mean, we've already got a very substantial.
I understand.
And it's not just, it's not just Medfield, there is, town meetings are scary, you guys know, I mean, if anything, you know, then you guys. Less than ten percent of registered voters of the town show up at town meetings. People know the town meetings are kind of a, you know, it's an interesting mix, particularly if they're, they spend a lot of time in Facebook.
Yeah.
That's our reality, and for us.
Us too.
To come out to the suburbs.
When would you like to go for a drink?
The one thing that was attractive about this, the town did the hard part, they did the zoning. They looked at all of the aspects, and the zoning typically is a hard part, and it was a two-thirds majority to support the zoning. That's really the hard part, we're just stepping in and saying, oh, if this is what you approved and this is what you want, and this is what you were soliciting. Where are you guys, where are you guys? But. Next Tuesday night, whoever walks in that room. And I'll know coming in from the apartment whether we're going to be successful or not. And I just, I just hope that people understand how fragile it is, we certainly understand it. And, you know, but also I just want people to understand that that night, if they are authorized to sell those, that's really the beginning of the beginning for us. We'll engage with you more, we'll engage with you more, we will get people comfortable with this. It's going to be a great project, I think some people have a sense of that, but I think others really can't fully comprehend. How cool this is going to be when it's done, it's going to be a real credit to the town. For the commitment this town made buying it from ECAM, that was huge, it was huge. But in the end, it may prove to be the right thing to do, especially if we're given an opportunity to do this project.
Anything else?
No, I mean, I would just counterpoint on. You have a year to continue to get to know us. You lose the voice, you lose the leverage after the town meeting.
Sure.
Right, and, you know, even, even like some of the ideas, it's five hundred thirty-five thousand or whatever it is versus the one point three. Lose the leverage and just lose it, so I appreciate, you know, who you are and I, again, I like you guys. It's more a town issue.
It's more what?
A town issue. Yeah, it's our issue, it's not you. You know, and it's, I'm a school committee, I just say what risks and rewards representing the school, I think the risks outweigh the rewards for the lane of school committee.
Just suggest, if that, if that's the sentiment of this board, that's not, that's going to be a real problem for us.
It's, it's the sentiment of one individual on the board. I, I, and just listening to it and I. I, I also, Todd, I go back to that question, I, I do wonder. Is small commercial development that doesn't bring in all the. Is that, could there have been other alternatives?
We, you know, we solicited interest, we sat with developers before we went to RFP and, and, you know, these guys do portions of other projects. And there's a question about the market and, you know, one of the criticisms of the master plan by people in town was, well, there's too much work, right? So. You know, it's, it's tough, but I think. The reality is we have, we have a master plan, we solicited interest in doing that master plan. We have somebody who's willing to do a project that's consistent with the major themes of that plan. The select and designated them in November. Twenty twenty-one, so. I know it seems soon, but in the context of where this has been going, and even really to go back starting nine years ago, like we, we have somebody who's going to do a deal. And so we can decide if we're not, and if we don't do the deal, I don't think we can have any share in since that.
You don't, like, I mean, I, I just look at it, I think developers are incredibly creative. And if you were to look at that land and say, hey, you know, what are some ideas, what else might you do? It would be interesting, the town might learn.
That's not where we are right now, and I'm going to stop this conversation now.
You can stop it if you choose, I'm probably going to keep talking for another minute or two, I'm just, I'm just saying, for me as an individual, the risks.
We are going to stop this right now.
Rewards.
And maybe you should be talking to, to Todd initially, because this is not something necessarily, this is not something that necessarily impacts the school part of this. Do not want to go back.
Thirty-five thousand dollars does impact the school part of it.
That is absolutely true, but I do not want to go back and revisit their process. I think we have all been second guessed enough over time. This was a discussion around.
So let's, let's explain how this occurred. I appreciate what you said, you're going to continue to get to know us a year from now and longer before the select board. Sells the property, but we vote on it next Tuesday. You know, that, that, I appreciate that, but the vote is done.
Let me explain the alternative. The pre-enrollment cost on this project is going to be three or four million dollars before we actually put a position closed. I would be hard pressed to run my partner and say, we're going to spend this kind of money to start this project and we don't have. The, the select board is not authorized to sell the property, we could have that kind of money. And wind up at the exact same place where we're going to be at June twenty-first. And lose. So it's important for us to get sense of the town. Whether or not this is something they can support, again, your select board. Todd and other people involved, the planning department, building department are going to be all over us over the next two years according to the requirements of this, this position. But we can't commit, we can't invest that kind of money unless we know the times behind us.
Yeah, and I'm not asking. I think what you're experiencing is a very. Bruised committee with a sense of. Hearing from the town, what people show up to do, you know, and. So like I said, you have my vote. I will be there.
And this is not the committee taking a vote on this.
That's right.
We will not be issuing an opinion.
Everyone's entitled to share.
One is entitled to their own opinion, correct? But I would like to move this discussion.
It is after nine o'clock.
It is after nine o'clock and I think we have thoroughly vetted this particular conversation, so.
We've kept the president of the PTO waiting long enough.
Just to, just to tell you how much I love this town. I gave up my tickets to Salt Lake.
But there's always day four. If they win, if they win tonight, then you're not allowed to go anymore. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so since, no, you're good, you're good, you just got to sit through a very long discussion. So I am going to invite Nicole up. To speak to us about what Nicole has done this year again. Nicole was seven minutes unlucky. Sorry, but she said.
Actually, twelve verses.
She is a little. Do you have a sweatshirt that actually says? And now I will forever know.
I, I think Jess was trying to suggest covering a couple of the other topics to get to seven thirty.
Right, I did try to kind of vamp a little bit.
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you all for having me.
So announce your name.
So I wrote this really long thing out, but I'm going to try to breathe.
You do a lot and you deserve protection, so go.
Thank you for having me, my name is Nicole Drummond, I am the current K three PTO president. The K three PTO is the umbrella to the individual school PTOs for Memorial, Wheelock, Dale and Blake. And although each of the schools have their, all the schools roll up into us, they're governed individually, so it's really important for everybody to. Always be reminded of, so should I stand here thinking actually about what a difference a year makes? Our kids are mask free in school, they're enjoying the year-end activities and I'm grateful to stand here and share what an absolutely amazing year that the K three PTOs have had. I have been a part of the PTOs for almost ten years in Medfield and this year has, we've just, we've shined and it's been amazing. And I thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to talk about it. We collaborated, we brainstormed, we thought outside box and most of all, we embrace change. Straight across all K three. And because of all of the hard work that we did, I'm thrilled to announce that we almost doubled the money that we have raised in any prior K three year of PTO fundraisers. So how did we get here? We thought about how the world around us is changing and in turn, we thought about the way the parents in Medfield are changing as well. And so we have more dual working households, we have families who don't have the time to volunteer to ours that we have come to expect in the past. And we probably do ultimately have COVID to thank us, thank for allowing us to slow down and really take a look as to who the parents are and who our community is today. So with that, we made the difficult decision to end the amazing winter carnival, which was our largest fundraiser for the K through five schools. And we replaced it with two individual fundraisers. We did a K three online auction, which we have done prior in person. For the, at the winter carnival and we did a K three, K through five fun run that we called the Rainbow Run. In the past, the most amount of money that the winter carnival ever raised was fifty-five thousand and had over two hundred volunteers. This year, the auction brought in seventeen thousand dollars and Rainbow Run raised ninety thousand dollars. And so for a total of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And we had a core group of four individuals who actually put these two events together. And so I have to thank publicly Kelly Scobal, Joey Bills and Nessie McCabe. Because without them, we would never have had this opportunity. And we had the four of us worked on these and a total of fifty volunteers only for two days of the Rainbow Run.
Basically.
Yeah, a true one. Not to mention that I have seen all of their names trying to get volunteers to cover recess. Volunteers to cover cafeteria, you know, like they are always out there. Pushing and bringing people in and getting parents into the schools.
Yeah.
In a way that is informal and yet at the same time allows them to see a picture of what we do.
Absolutely, yeah, and it's.
So I want to appreciate that, that too.
It's, yes, no, definitely, and so. I, yes, a hundred percent, I actually want to talk just briefly about each one of those schools because they all deserve that recognition. But I do want to just add that we are going to have Nicole with these fundraisers annuals, so we're really excited about that. And we also, this year for the energy, I think everybody's really excited to just be back, right? So we received just incredible positive feedback from the parents on these two events and we're really excited. And we would just also like to say that if anybody has feedback, we appreciate all of it, so anything can come in through us. And we're just, we're so grateful to be raising our children here and I personally, it has restored my faith in this community. How in two months, we were able to really transform and see this community come back and come together and for the schools, it was, it's all been just warmed my heart fully. In addition to these fundraisers, we actually also raised an additional thirty-two thousand dollars just from K three, just for K three. Through our dues, the base aid textiles and we have open spiritware online year-round store. And Republic, I need to give a shout out to, they always are amazing to us and they did a, ran a exceptionally successful fundraiser as well. We just want to touch on each one of the schools because each of those schools work so incredibly hard. Memorial. They raised an additional on fundraising, they raised an additional seventy-two thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, seventy-two hundred dollars. They, and their grants, they did multicultural crowns, they gave Every Story Matters and they. And I actually just want to talk about that Every Story Matters, I'm going to read what was said about it. One of our biggest accomplishments was the Every Story Matters book drive. The goal of the book drive was to update every memorial classroom with approximately thirty-seven new award-winning picture books that foster awareness and inclusivity. Across all races and genders. The Memorial PTO partnered with Park Street Books, MCP, yeah, MCP as well as the Memorial staff, family and friends to bring over seven hundred new books into the school. The diversity, equity and inclusion themes in these stories will help teachers and students to examine differences and similarities to potentially see themselves or their families represented. And to develop confidence in their personal and social identities. And that is, has, it was just remarkable to see and so important for our schools. So I did want to give them huge credit and shout out for all of that. And they funded amazing things, but in addition to the Every Story Matters, one of the great gifts that is also coming that. Dr. Billsborough was told of is the class of twenty thirty-three and twenty thirty-four are gifting ten thousand dollars to start the new playground. So from that Memorial PTO, so that is also a huge. Welcome, very excited, so thank you to all of the families that donated and are enabling us to do this. Wheelock, to what you were saying, this year, they, they did a, also outside the box, they did the holiday shop, which they've never done before, they raised almost five thousand dollars. And their ice cream social had nine hundred attendees.
Imagine, who are those people? Who are those people?
They live here. They live here. They want to be involved.
That's amazing. Yeah, so. Throw the ice cream social at the June 21st annual town meeting this year. I just, I'm just asking for a break.
Yeah. So, and then they also, Wheelock also, it's, I feel like everything was just, it was, just embrace change has been the theme for all of our schools this year. They did their Kindness Rocks project, but they also, this year, they coordinated year-round lunch and recess volunteers for the first time. And it is amazing. I mean, people stepped up and they want to, and they, you know, host that they can't make it. So someone else steps up. It is an unbelievable, organized, and Nessie McCabe has orchestrated all of it. It's been, it's been amazing. They did a Wheelock variety show, which was tonight. And they also, they had year-round hospitality events for the teachers and the staff, which all of the schools have really started to put in place. For Dale, they also, thinking outside the box, they put in some new chair positions. So we actually have parents who are chairing community service, and service programming and fundraising. The food drive was that they, that the parents, actually one of the parents initiated and drove. They donated unprecedented amounts of Medfield food covered. The kids felt like they were involved in this. They had programming in which they granted fourth grade mythology unit and a fifth grade graphic novel unit. They also had a hip hop presentation that was done. They also have parents, they started a pop playground, Parents on the Playground. So parents are able to kind of get in a little bit when their kids are in fourth and fifth grade. And they funded countless grants in addition to all of that. And Blake has really started to get a lot of the energy behind them with some stuff. They, they approve grants for safe learning, for a safe learning environment, keep gender diverse students safe. They have, they funded partially for a water bottle, bottle filling station. They also for feminine products, they're been helping with all of that, which surprisingly has not been in the Blake schools. And then right now, they're actually looking to begin funding some furniture options for the Blake Learning Library. And they, they do teacher appreciation, appreciation all year. They do the eighth grade graduation picnic, and they are having a slushy truck for the sixth and seventh grade. And they also have made an additional with like, they do their annual appeal, they've made an additional $6,390. So we have, and it's coming from our community, and that really has been just the greatest story of all. So I, I can't thank everybody that, if anybody's still there. I can't thank them enough, because we could not have, couldn't do it without the, you know, it's weak. This year, I feel like PTO is exactly what it actually stands for, for parent-teacher organization, and we have fully come together. So really excited about next year's.
And thank you for, thank you so much. I mean, it's really awesome.
I just want to point out two things that I think are so amazing, that through all the things you kind of went past, but funding, the supporting gender diverse learners, getting kids. And which I thought was one of the most impactful presentations I've ever seen as a parent, come out of many of our schools. I, we've been here for you know, 11 years at this point. And the other one is the, the day that I saw that that Bay State Textiles had finally sent their graphic or their M to put over the Warrior headdress. And I knew how hard you had to work, pursue amongst all the other stuff to be able to say that this is our logo.
Yeah.
And that we don't have to continue to, you know, like, because it's a private entity, continue to see something that that was, who might have been five years ago, things were put in.
Yeah.
And I really do appreciate that, because I know that it was not easy, and I knew that it took a long time, and we stayed on it. And thank you.
But it was, it was the right thing to do. So I appreciate everybody.
Both of those things demonstrate to me how much the PTO and all of our organizations are really looking to support every kid. That isn't, you know, there's no kid who's, you know, deserves to just kind of be left off because it's easier.
Yes.
So thank you.
To that point, we are going to begin working on formalizing the Angel Fund.
Yes.
Through.
Sorry, was that like a big celebration moment? Thank you.
And how we're going to have it maneuvered so that it can be a seamless process. So that will begin hopefully over the summer to make it a seamless process for our community and for those in need, so that they do not feel like they need to approach, they have to approach themselves. And we're developing all of that, not through PTO. PTO will be the lead on to it, but we're kind of initiating all of that. So.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Yeah, that, that is my, that has been my, my dream here, that no family has to worry about whether they can pay for Medfield experience, because it's not just your tax dollars or, you know, a box of crayons.
Yeah.
It's a lot more than that.
Yeah. And, and to be, and to give credit all of the, the teachers and, you know, the, the staff, they, they're concerned about those things too. And it's my own personal right now, like a little bit of a campaign to make sure that, that I want that off of their plate. Like, I, I want, I would love to be able to see Medfield flourish and money not be the part that is stopping us from giving our kids what they deserve and what they, you know, they can get.
Thank you for the K PTO. Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, well, sorry. So, um, are we going to hear from MMA or?
They are coming next week.
Okay, in the high school PTO?
On the 16th. And, and if we have invited everyone, and so anybody who was not here and has responded will be here next week. Well, Andrea sent out the invitation, so.
High School PTO?
High School PTO, I did not ask. We didn't ask them last year.
Could you pretty please?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so we will hear from the MMA and CPAC next week as well. Cool. Hopefully, the high school PTO. Okay, wow, so we're not out of the business yet. So, Dr. Marsden, would you like to take it away?
Sure.
Thank you, Nicole.
So I asked you to approve the following student scholarships for our graduating seniors. So we were unable to give our seniors written checks. So we need to have your approval before we do that. So this would allow us to do that. So one, one David Vedaris Theatre Society Memorial Award at $1,000. One Medfield High School Theatre Society Award of Distinction at $1,000. Three Medfield High School Theatre Society Awards at $500 each for a total of $1,500. Two Student Council Awards at $250 each, two Unsun Leader Awards at $250 each, 14 National Arms Society Awards at $200 each for a total of $28,000. And six National Arms Society Awards at $350 each for a total of $2,100. Ask to approve those as presented.
Do I hear a motion? Leo moves. MMA, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
And then the next one is from students who we will accept the donation now. But then our students who raised this money will come and give us a presentation about their senior project next week. Dr. Marsden, would you like to present that?
So, sure. Ask you to approve the following donation, $2,000 to the Medfield High School gift account from the senior project GoFundMe for Onflow dispensers.
Right. Do I hear a motion to approve? Leo and second, MMA, okay. And all in favor? Okay, aye, the motion passes. And then, Dr. Marsden, about the student activity.
Sure, we'd like to establish a student activity subaccount at Medfield High School. And Mrs. Schaefer is working with a group of students that would like to open up a store that will sell Medfield gear in order to purchase and then collect the funds so that it's a revolving almost account for the student store. It needs to be approved by the school committee. So I ask that you approve MHS student activity subaccount for the DECA program to maintain and open a school store.
Do I hear a motion to approve as, or would there like to be any discussion about this?
It was a matter of materials, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, second?
Second, Michelle.
Michelle, okay. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Other items, it's posting on June 6th.
I don't have any.
All right, old business. We'll go to the fiscal year '23 budget update. Is there any update at this point?
We had a placeholder for that, as we do every year. There's no update for 2023 at this point.
And I'm sorry, I'm not asking the two people in the audience if they would like to do kind of public comment on that. And then, so we are at the wrap-up section here. We did cover donations. I tricked you. Do we have any informational items? Okay, so we have future agenda items, which are the MASC School Committee Roles and Responsibilities Workshop. I'm still working on that, and they actually happen this summer or at the beginning of next year. CPAC and MMA will give their presentations next week, and hopefully the high school PTO. And then I know that Tim would like to discuss ways to make the agenda faster and some other kind of planning around how we run meetings. So our next meeting will be on Thursday, June 16th at 2022 at 7:00 PM. We will be having an executive session that I believe we would like to plan for 5:30 for a kind of an extra long one on that day. Okay? So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Okay, wait here a second. And Michelle, and then all in favor? Aye. Motion passes, and the meeting is adjourned at 9:30. Thank you so much.